Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Londonderry Town Council meeting. Today is March 6th and it's 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, undivided, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Hey, we just had a recent snowstorm several times last week and our Department of Public Works was out there leading the way and clearing the roads and they worked around the clock. So, big thank you to them and so tonight's moment of solace is for all those people who are out there working all night for us. So, ladies and gentlemen, we open with public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment?
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Martha Smith. My address is 38 Shaster Drive in Londonderry. And I believe that tonight might be Counselor Paul's last meeting as a town council member. And I just wanted to thank her for her service. I think that she's done a good job for the residents of Londonderry. She's spoken out for voices that maybe aren't heard very loudly and I appreciate all the work that she's done and I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I would also like to say that all the good work that Deb Paul has done, she's now, I believe this is the last meeting and I, wife will one, certainly appreciate everything she's done. I think she's tried to step up and speak for the citizens and I hope she will still be part of Londonderry. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ray.
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I have a letter from someone and then for myself, can I do both?
You have five minutes.
Deb, as a mother, a taxpayer, I can say how truly blessed we have been to have you sitting up here representing us. You have been the only counselor to stand up for what is right and speaking out against for what is blatantly wrong. Bullies in this town have tried to use their positions or personal relationships to come after you and your paper, The Londonderry Times, a paper that brings the community together with honest reporting, yet some who are in this room have tried everything they can. Oh, it's going to go away on me.
And who wrote that letter?
That was from Monica Plourd, so.
Thank you.
I couldn't get all of it. I apologize. So, thank you. Thank you, Deb. Thank you for all you have done and continue to do for this community. Thank you for fighting for what is right and bringing some transparency to an otherwise very cloudy town government. Thank you for standing up, often alone, for true democracy. Thank you for continuing to fight for truth through the bullying, the mistreatment, and the blatant attempt to break you and silence you. You have been heard by many and hopefully change will prevail. The three roses are for each of your years, the yellow because you're a friend to all of us. Thank you, Deb Paul.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted, I wanted to mention this last time, but there's a lot going on. I'm surprised it was a board member from the Budget Committee came to the school board and said they're going to use Dominion machines and that shocked me with all of the bad press Dominion machines have got, I mean, the multi-billion dollar lawsuit from Fox and then Discovery that admitted that the machines were riddled with bugs, incorrect tallies, and incorrect results. You've got Michigan, you've got Edison Research that found deletion of votes, Antrim County, software glitches blamed on human error, machines preset to erase login activities, activity logins and activity logs. In Pennsylvania, you had a 19,000 swing vote, CNN calls it an error. In Georgia, same excuses and you all saw the briefcases come out from underneath the desks. In Mesa County, Colorado, thousands of ballots recounted. Dominion and Secretary of State, they destroyed the data on the hard drives and federal losses you have to keep that for 22 months. And what just happened in Arizona, they changed the size of the Dominion ballots so now they can't be read. I mean, I could go on. And then the Democrats in 2016 cried about the machines, how inaccurate they were, but they loved it when Biden got elected, so. Not to mention they come from Canada, one of the most communist countries around here now. They've got military drills with China, they destroyed gun rights, you can't even own a handgun up there anymore. And the truckers that came out to protest, they completely, they debanked them, they took their trucks, I mean, total, total tyranny. Call it what you, it was horrible. So then they had a cybersecurity analyst, Jay Alex Haldeman, look into these Dominion machines and found flaws and potential for future attacks. They're equipped with Wi-Fi and Bluetooth which can access software and servers. They create shadow bases. Then a federal judge sealed his report, just like a federal judge sealed Pfizer. They wanted to wait 55 years to release the trial data from Pfizer, from the trial with the COVID shots, okay? So this stinks.
Okay.
Let's see. I don't know. And then last, last week, well, two, whenever it was, it just, it, it just leads to everything that doesn't really make sense, you know? And you get answers, but when something stinks, it stinks. If we're being lied to and we want to be told. All I heard last week about that woman was positive things and nobody spoke up and seconded her call to null and void a restructuring and, I don't know, a restructuring, would Kevin Smith have done something like this to leave a position vacant? And it just, it seems, it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, you know what I mean? Call it a duck. I don't know. I think people's actions or inactions is going to have a consequence, especially at the polls. If there was more to that story with that poor woman, I'd like to know. I mean, why did that happen? It just caused such an uproar that it stunk.
So the town council is bound and restricted by 91A by state law. We are not allowed to discuss employee matters, personnel matters, not allowed by state law. We're not allowed to talk about it. It is against the law.
Well, I don't know. The way it was done, you know what I mean, as an outsider looking in, doesn't look right.
Sir, I appreciate your comments. I can only comment that we're restricted by state law.
I thought 91A, Bob, is it 91A, Freedom of Information Act or something that you have to?
Well, 91A has, sir, 91A has multiple facets.
Okay.
One of them is under personnel.
Okay.
We are restricted under, under 91A, under personnel, we can't talk about it. We're not allowed.
If somebody gave a FOIA request, you'd have to, right? If somebody filed that?
No.
You wouldn't have to?
We'd go to our attorneys and be privileged information. We are not allowed to talk about it. Want to make that very clear. We are not allowed.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Name and address, please.
Tom Esti, Old Nashua Road, lifelong resident. All right, so I guess my question, or maybe you can give me an answer. So, I'm part of the LRC in this town and so is Mr. Chad Franz. So, I would really like to know why, not just if we can't use a community room, why can't we use any room in this town hall? Any room? We could use this room. I mean, can you give me an answer for that? I mean, we're, we're, everyone in this room, I believe, is from Londonderry and we're all taxpayers, am I right?
Yeah.
Do we not, do we not light this building, put electric through here? Do we not pay the salaries of all of our workers? I mean, I would just like a response from you, that's all.
Well, I'm going to look it up and I'm going to give it to you right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate it. So today, I did the, I did the pleasure of calling all multiple towns and they get to use their police departments, they get to use their town hall, senior center, fire department. Nashua has multiple rooms that they can use, they can use libraries. Another town had Grange Halls, a gym. I called Hudson, Derry, Wyndham, Litchfield, Nashua, Bedford, Goffstown, Chester, Salem, and San Morton. Hollis was closed at 3:00. And Manchester, by the time I got to them at 4:30, I couldn't talk to anyone.
You're with me, I'm looking it up.
Yeah, take your time. Take your time. I'm in no rush. Deb, thank you for your service. I appreciate everything you did.
Thank you. It's been an honor to serve the town of Londonderry.
All right, so, the town charter was written in 1996. There are several members who are still alive who are part of that. Article 4, Administration of Government, Powers and Duties of the Manager. Section 4, 4.6. The manager shall have full jurisdiction over the rental and use of all town facilities under the manager's control. The manager shall be responsible for all maintenance, repair, and all town property under the manager's control, within the limits of existing appropriation. So, the town council doesn't make the decision on whether or not we, whether or not we use the building for other things. We do rent out the senior center, the library, I don't know what their rules are, they're a separate form of government. The police station comes under the direction of the police chief by state law. The police chief has sole control and responsibility of the police building. He is the only one who can make that decision.
So, you supersede anyone, you can hire and fire Malaguti, you can fire Kim, you can fire any one of those firemen, just like you got rid of Lorogandia.
With all due respect, sir, I'm not going to discuss personnel with you. Your, your.
Well, what I, what I'm trying to say, John, is you have.
Correct.
You, you can say, you know what, Tom? You're absolutely right. All these towns give their citizens, taxpayers, they can use a building. My family's been in this town before it was even Londonderry. We donate, we've, we've given money our whole lives and you're telling us we cannot use a room.
Tom, lower your voice.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just upset about the whole thing where we pay taxes all these years and I can't, we can't use a room? What do you think we're going to do? Mr. Malaguti, what do you think we're going to do with a room?
Tom, Tom, you either address me or you can sit down. Don't raise your voice again. I've given you an answer, right? The people who do use the building go through a sanctioning process with the town council, right? Such as direct groups. Those are the rules. That's what the charter says and there's a lot of things the charter says. The charter is 41 pages.
Okay, John.
That's what we have to follow.
You can change that, is what I'm saying.
No, you can't change.
Yes, you can. You can change that.
Tom, I'm, I'm, I'm going to have this conversation with you, which is not normally what we do. The town charter can only be changed by town, by charter commission. There is an entire electoral process that has to happen to change the town charter. We can't change it.
Absolutely, you can.
Well, Tom.
Well, why is every single town, every single town who I talk to?
I can't, I can't speak for other towns, Tom. I, here's what the rules are.
And by the way, when did this charter come up? We've had people in the community room that, doing kids stuff, the carvings, the soccer things, and you know what? That's fine. And they're allowed to. Anyone, any political party, or any group, whether it would be the groups from Londonderry Old Home Days that no one approved of, you know what? They have a right, if they're taxpayers, like Mr. Malaguti said, it's our First Amendment freedom of speech. I believe that's what you said after Old Home Day here, right?
Tom, that has nothing to do with what we're discussing here.
It's, John, it has everything to do with it. You can change the rule and say, you know what?
No, I can't change the rule.
Okay.
The rule is.
Well, hop onto the next question, maybe the next time I come up.
The manager shall have full jurisdiction over the rental and use of the town facilities under the manager's control.
So, my next thing is, going back to the Gandias, so I respectfully ask that the members, well, you three and Joe's missing, Deb's going to be gone, but I respectfully ask that you drop the no trespass on, on the Gandias, especially Chris. I cannot believe he's, what, 52, 53? That gentleman spent half of his life serving and protecting this community. And how disgusting it is that we put a no trespass in this town. He doesn't even live in this town, for goodness sake. It's awful. I mean, I would, I would be ashamed.
Lower your voice.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, it's just, it's upsetting.
I've lifted, let the record reflect, I've lifted the five-minute limit.
So, and the other thing on the Gandy is, we got rid of a lady who did her job perfect. She did her job too perfect, from what I recall, and we let her go, but now we're hiring, so for the people who are listening to this at home, we are now hiring Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, a lady to work 15 hours a week and she's making 100 to 120 something dollars an hour? That's over three times what we're paying Lorogandia. So, how are we saving money?
Is there a question?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, well, I just don't understand why we would let a valuable, we need, we, we need a planner and she was a valuable asset and we just, and we let her go and now we're hiring.
Again, under 91A, we're not going to answer personnel questions.
Well, I mean, I, I know the truth and, and, and they're friends of mine and I know them and I know the truth.
So what?
And it's all hogwash, just so you know.
So what question do you want to ask?
Well, one of them, I asked you, lift the no trespass on the Gandias, because it's wrong. It's wrong.
Again, this, the town council has no jurisdiction.
All right, I'm, I'm not going to argue all night, John.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm going to finish.
Okay.
We have no jurisdiction over that. Such things that happen that are personal. For example, there was, you know, something that happened with one of the counselors, it was a personal matter. There was something that happens with someone else, it's a personal matter. The town council isn't going to get involved in that. The no trespass order is between the town manager and the police department. It doesn't have anything to do with the town council. Is there anything else?
Well, you can supersede that, like I said.
No, we can't.
Okay, all right.
It is a police matter.
My, my next one is, did someone say something?
No.
The next one is, so I was, I was reading the, I was reading the Derry News. I got the paper here. And I'm looking at all of these sample ballots. Now, I have glasses and I can't even read the sample ballots, but I'm trying to think, why are we putting all of this, all of this stuff in this newspaper when we have a paper in town that hits every single home? This one doesn't. This paper, this, this paper don't. This is garbage. This is all fake news right here. Why are we doing this? I mean, who was the ding dong that, you know?
Tom, again, I'm going to warn you one more time. I've lifted the limit, I've showed you major courtesies here. I'm asking you to show the same. Are you finished?
No, I, well, I just asked you a question. Why are we putting that in here?
That's an operational decision. I'm not, I don't know what it is and we'll look into it. Thank you.
So, when I come back, I'll have an answer next time? Because, I mean, I would, I would like an answer.
I, we'll look into it and I'll let you know. I'll have the town manager get in touch with you.
Mike's going to call me?
I'm, I'll have him look into it and I'll ask him to give you a call.
Okay, appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I called the town manager a week ago and asked why the school board ballots were in The Londonderry Times and not the town ballots were not in The Londonderry Times. I don't get the Derry News. No one in my neighborhood gets the Derry News. I did not get a call back. And I want to know, who does Mike Malaguti work for?
Mike Malaguti reports to the town council.
Okay, I rest my case. He reports to the town council, so who gave Mike Malaguti the authority to print, not print in The Londonderry Times when the school board did?
Ms. Perez, I would suggest that you read the town charter. His authority is in the town charter. All operational decisions, and there's a non-interference clause in the town charter.
Okay, and then my next, my next question is, Mike Malaguti gave me permission to use the, the, with Kim Bernard, to use the community room.
I'm not going to address that. It's been addressed.
You know, if some of the laws up north go through, you will have to address us.
Again, you, it's very simple. We've addressed it already, I've addressed it once, I'm not going to address it multiple
Lynn Douglas, 6 Overlook Ave. I got a couple of things. There's a rule in the town, I forget what it is, XVI, something about videos. I call it the two-week rule. We don't allow anyone that makes a video running for town council, school board, or whatever, to put their video online until two weeks before the election. However, anyone sitting up here or in the school board can say anything they want to, let's say, persuade people to vote for them. That rule needs to go, in my opinion. It's restricting freedom of speech for candidates. This happened last year. Candidate made a video a month in advance and was told, sorry, you can't put it on. Videos don't come out until two weeks before, so you can't run a letter to the editor in the paper because the paper has a cutoff that you can't run anything against the candidate, so you pretty much can't say anything. That's one. Charter. Well, the talk about the charter, I heard at the BudCon meeting the other night that candidates can only hold one office. So I did look at the charter and there's a section in the charter that says you can only hold one office. If you are elected to a new office, you immediately forfeit your former office. We have a moderator that was elected after he was elected to the Budget Committee, who's still the moderator, and he's still on the Budget Committee. I'd like to know if he should have resigned his position when he was elected moderator. There's one more here, but my screen locked up. You guys don't want to answer the, the no trespass thing, that's fine, but I would like to know by what authority it is that you can issue a non-no trespass. I don't believe there is one. And as far as the five-minute rule, I've been following this stuff since way back 2006. We didn't have a rule back then. You could come up, you could talk. Then we moved to a five-minute rule, then we moved to a three-minute rule, then the school board moved to, you know, a three-minute rule conversation, but you have to wait till 11 o'clock at night. We had to pass a law up in Concord. There's a lot that has changed. I will say that the no trespass thing, there was a counselor that told me he would address that issue as a counselor, and he's not here. So, March 14th, I certainly hope people come out and vote and fix what I think is really wrong in this town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I come in front of you tonight to just give you a little state of affairs of the, of your fire department. I just wanted to start by saying we are in the process of hiring our six vacant positions. We had a new employee start today. I will have three more starting on April 3rd and then I have two in the pipeline that will be starting probably sometime this summer. One thing that we've done this year that we've never done in the past is we've hired, as we know, paramedics have become a commodity. We are hiring just individuals that have only paramedic certification. We just put one of our recent employees through recruit school this past fall and we will have another one starting in April at the recruit school and then another one starting in August. So these are all individuals that are coming to us with just the paramedic certification but no firefighting credentials whatsoever. And just to give you a little, you know, piece of what we've done, since 2013, I have hired 51 employees out of a roster of 57. So, the, the market is tight. Paramedics are definitely hard to come by, so we've tried to look out and get out of the box a little bit to figure out how we can get these people back into our service. I am pleased to say we have currently two individuals that are going through paramedic school at this time. We will have another two starting probably sometime early spring. So I think we're going to get back to where we were, you know, three years ago, we had 17 paramedics. We now have seven. So I think we will eventually get back there, but right now, we're, you know, we're doing things to basically alter the way we've been doing things in the past. And that's kind of the bridge to the, my next comment here is on two shifts now, so we, we are, we are hiring two shifts at the, at 12 individuals per shift. Two, two shifts are currently at 11 per shift, just due to budgetary constraints. These two shifts that we're running currently at 12, on March 1st, we started what we call a paramedic fly car. So the ambulances that will be responding to your, to your emergencies now may not always have a paramedic on the ambulance, but there'll be a paramedic stationed at Central Station that will follow the ambulance on calls at a, the, the way that 911 distinguishes them is Alpha through, Alpha Bravo, Charlie, Delta Echo. They will be responding to anything Charlie and above or anything that the ambulance crew requests them for. Salem has been doing this model for many years now and it's worked out well for them. Like I said, we are going to try it to see how it works out. I don't think it's ideal. I think it's a way to attract more paramedics to come into town, you know, in the long run. But I- Um, but I really feel, as your fire chief, that we will get back to the way that we were staffing prior to this whole transition phase taking place. It's just going to take a little bit of time. Um, so again, that started on March 1st on two shifts and uh I will come back to you probably within 30 days or so and let you know how it's gone for the uh, the first month. Um, apparatus replacement. Um, we've been on the dock now to replace two of our ambulances now for two years. Um, cabin chassis were unavailable. And there was a, there was a timeframe wait in order to be able to do so. We had to sign contracts without having prices on what, what the ambulance was going to cost. So we weren't comfortable in doing so. Recently, we found out that the uh the manufacturer that we uh get the ambulances from now have chassis in, in uh, in stock. So we are on the assembly line for one. Uh, but here's the thing. Ambulance, our last ambulance cost us $238,000 back in 2019. Ambulance is now up to almost $400,000 with a 26, 26-month wait time. So, I mean, we have, like I said, we have two to be replaced right now, but we're not looking at getting these ambulances until sometime 24, 25. You know, it's crazy. Our fire apparatus, our, the, the fire trucks themselves. Our last fire truck cost $734,000. The next one is budgeted at 1.1 million dollars. Again, a 26-month timeframe for, for, for waiting for these things. So I can, you know, I, I can honestly say I'm glad to see and to have the support of the council from when I took office to where we are right now, that we don't have any vehicles that are 20, 25 years old that are rusting, rusting apart and pieces falling off. Our apparatus is good. I mean, you'll see in the operating budget that the uh, the maintenance cost has definitely gone up on them. Um, but uh, we have a good uh maintenance program that we, we try and keep these trucks up to snuff with. And uh, we'll, we'll make it through this, but I just wanted to give you guys the heads up on, on the price increases uh through the roof, through the roof. I'm going to have staff come to you tonight, so um Deputy Butler, Battalion Chief Halliwell, and Lieutenant Lammy have worked really hard on this presentation in reference to our capital uh request withdrawal. Um, we were going to bring this back to you in late fall, but looking at the meetings that we're having, I just didn't feel it was a timeframe to do so, so they've been patient. Um, they've put together a great presentation, so I asked you guys to, to just look through it. I mean, these are our future leaders of this fire department. I think they've done a tremendous job. At the end of it, if you have any questions, you know, by all means, I want you to answer. I want you to ask. Um, our capital account, you know, when I took office was, was below $100,000. Um, it's currently, you know, probably over $500,000. The reason that that is that way, and I talked about this a little bit in the deliberative session, is we use this account now to supplement things that the operating budget doesn't, doesn't not cover anymore. Uh, replacement for personal protective gear, something that we used to buy for $2,000 is now costing us over $5,000. Uh, we use it for matching funds for grants that we apply for. Um, and one thing that I looked at was, you know, we have, the way it was designed when I, when I took over, it was, okay, you're going to replace the rescue tool every five years. Well, we have a maintenance program within the department that we have things maintained, we have things certified, so just for the sake of replacing something when it says to replace it in five years, I thought it was a waste of the taxpayers' money. And I was going to save those funds for things that you'll see coming up tonight. Um, there's going to be quite a few things on this list, but when I took, again, when I took office in 2013, we had hoes coming out our ears, we had different pieces of equipment that were, you know, here and the, the crew has done a great job to put this presentation together and I think will answer a lot of questions for you. Um, and let's see, last but not least, um, well, two more things actually. Uh, Safer 23 has come out. So that is that uh grant that uh is, allows you to uh apply for firefighters that will um be covered by a grant. And the grant is, again, this year was uh three years for 100% financing. So I'm asking permission from the council uh to be able to apply for this grant. Again, we've applied for it two th- two times now since 2017. Uh, we have not been successful, but I think it's a, it's worth the opportunity to try again. I've been talking to the finance director, Justin Campo, and uh we have a third-party grant right now that's going to help us along with this. And I guess the question for you folks is, here's what I'm thinking. Four, four individuals will bring each group up to 13. 13 will allow us to maintain a three-man engine company, but it will also allow us to use this fly car. I could do it that way. I could run two groups at 14, so you could see what 14 per shift would do versus the 12 per shift. Or I can ask you to get permission to try for eight people. Then I can bring each shift up to 14, which gets us closer to that NFP standard that we've been talking about in all of our meetings in the past. Um, again, I don't want to ask for too much, but I want the direction from you folks in reference to how to do so.
When do you need an answer, Chief?
Well, that's the thing. I was going to come to you back um on the 6th, because this, we just, when we get notification with this, probably about two weeks ago? Two weeks ago, uh, the grant closes this Friday.
Okay.
So it opened up, it opened up today, or yes, yeah, today, and it closes on Friday.
So in the past, we've said yes, right?
You have said yes, yeah.
Does the council want to continue to apply for the Safer grant?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Any direction?
Four.
Okay, very good.
I, I, I think eight's probably too much for us to bite off.
Okay. And then last, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let everybody know that uh recently we have one of our firefighter paramedics that has been diagnosed with cancer. So uh, we have, uh, the union has, on their Facebook page, we're doing, they're doing a fundraiser and uh they're selling T-shirts. And all the proceeds will go to this firefighter while she is out on medical leave. And I'm pleased to say thus far, and it's only been online almost a week, they've raised almost $18,000. So I wanted to say this up in front of you to not only tell the council, but to tell those citizens that are, that are listening today um that uh just to check out the uh 3160's Facebook page and uh all the support that we can get will be greatly appreciated.
Please see that that link is sent to the counselors.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Question. Yeah, so just so I have clarity, because this is kind of preluding to what I want to discuss next, I guess. How many paramedics do we have presently?
So what, what's happened, Jim, is most of the paramedics that we've had in the past, they have either retired
Right.
or have now got promoted to lieutenants.
Okay.
Some have got promoted to battalion chiefs.
Okay.
So um, we had, like I said, we had 17 probably three to four years ago. And I think there's currently seven on the, seven on the dock, right? Per shift? Yeah. All right, so eight, well, yes, eight.
Okay.
Um, so what we're doing now and you know, we're trying to staff where the paramedics can get out to go to the L stations to still remember how to be a firefighter.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and to know engine company and ladder company operations. Um, since the pandemic, you know, we've had our first running ambulance out of Central Station, so we're required to have, or I'm required to have two paramedics in Central Station. But that's become, that's become almost infallible now. Um, we, we don't want to hold people over. Uh, we try to hire the medics and sometimes you can't hire the medics. Um, so we're just looking at other, other ways that we can go about doing this that's still going to provide the uh service to the citizens, but not necessarily burn out the paramedics that we currently have.
Okay, and as far as total employees or firefighters, are we up to snuff to where we were, or do we have openings currently right now?
I currently have openings right now. Um, like I said, I have, I just hired, uh, one new employee started today. I'll have three starting on April 3rd, maybe four.
Okay.
Um, and two of the positions I'm holding out for, one, uh, the gentleman gets out of the service in June. He's an Army Ranger with paramedic certification that I will be sending to school, the recruit school in August. And then another one, um, that's a paramedic that will be starting on April 3rd, will go to the recruit school in April. And then I have another one that's in the military, but she injured herself just when she was prior to getting out, so now we're just waiting to hear what her medical status is before we can move forward with her. So I'm anticipating that all your vacancies will be filled by the 1st of July to, to our current uh roster of 48 firefighters. Um, five dispatchers, four battalion chiefs and four administrative staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, John, I'd like to.
Public comment is now closed. Um, I have a couple of quick things from public comment. One is, is um, I don't understand the two-week video thing either, so I'd like to find out what that is.
Mm-hmm.
And um, and I don't understand it, I don't know why we have it. So if we could check into that and find out what that is, it'd be appreciated. Uh, the gentleman who got up and talked about the Dominion voting machines, that's a decision by the Secretary of State's office. Um, and then everything is run by the state from that, from that point of view. They're going to be here testing for this election. So the Secretary of State will have people here. I, I believe the AG will probably have people coming and going. And um, it's a test. I, I, I don't, I don't understand the whole piece of it. Um, but I can tell you that the state is doing it as a test to see what it does. And I guess we'll find out what happens from that. But, so I can't answer all your questions, but I can tell you that's what's happening. Um. There was an ad locally about the town treasurer. Part of the process that they said that was in there is that the town manager will select the, the town treasurer. If, if it's approved by the voters. That's not true. Just like the tax collector is appointed by the town council, the town treasurer, if approved, will only be appointed by the town council. If you want to see an example of what an ad may look like, the town of Hudson ran an ad in the union leader this past weekend looking for a town treasurer. And with the criteria that they're looking for, it was actually a pretty well-done ad. Um, the town of Derry currently appoints their town treasurer. But the correction to the ad is that the town manager will not be involved. It will be the town council, much as like we do the tax collector now. Um, I think that's it from public comment. I think I, we answered the rest of the questions. And I'm sorry, um, anyone else? Yes?
Yeah. Uh, what I would like to speak about is uh growth ma- a growth management ordinance in this town. Historically, the town of London Dairy has had two. One in 1998 and one in 2002. And the growth management ordinance sunsetted, the 2000 uh ordinance sunsetted in 2017. So we do not have a growth management ordinance in this town. One of the criterias that we look at in trying to develop a uh, what we call a GMO, that's what it's called, is uh the ability of our community to absorb the growth, number one, in schools, police and fire. Can we absorb the growth? That's key. Uh, consideration to demonstrate that the departments uh will be taxed with additional growth. Uh, I can tell you, I'm a creature of habit. I'm up at 4 o'clock every morning. First thing I do as a responsibility to the town, to the taxpayers, is I go through the reports that are online. I go through the police reports. Uh, I have some concerns now, and I think the, I think the chief is trying to manipulate some things so we have enough paramedics to continue the service that we all enjoy. We're not getting any, believe it or not, younger. Uh, so I've looked at the, over the budget period. You know, the schools, the schools are looking to build, renovate, add classrooms. So even though the, and correct me, Bob, you're a school committee member, even though the enrollment has gone down, the school still has some needs. And I understand it. I don't, may not like it, but I understand it. Okay, so even if the schools are down, there's still pressure, as you can tell through this last budget season and CIP, that the, the, the schools need facilities. We've got issues. Uh, I take a look at the London Dairy Fire Department during the budget season. The chief has got up and we're shorthanded. We have vacancies. We have vacancies and um, that's great news, Chief, that the fire department's vacancies are going to be, are going to be filled, and I hope that they are. Things can change. So what happens when you're short vacancies? Now, all of a sudden, we got to fill shifts. If we don't fill the shifts, are we giving the citizens of London Dairy the services that they like and they have always enjoyed? Well, that becomes budgetary. Every time we have to do overtime, you have an overtime budget and we're always talking about overtime budgets. So, you know, I've taken a look at reports and this is where my concerns are. And uh, it's not in, it's not in family permits, single-family housing. It's not in single-family housing. Uh, where I see our cons- uh, where I see the concern is in multifamily, in big uh apartment buildings being built or, or being approved. Uh, there are great people in those buildings, but when they happen, they usually happen in phases. And when they come on, you have an abundance of people. You may, if phase one is 50, all of a sudden you have 50 new, well, 100 new plus kids. I, I won't go into the percentages, but you have to figure there are going to be kids on it. So when I take a look at these reports, this is my view of the reports. I haven't, none, no one up here is, I haven't even really even talked to them about it, nor have I asked for any, any uh information. And please, don't get this wrong. This is factual information. We service Wallace Farm on a continuous basis. That has one, two, three, four, five buildings, I think. Uh, they are constantly in the reports. Uh, McGregor Cut is constantly in the reports. Now, I, I'm not going to get in to what type of reports, because to me, it doesn't make any difference. When the chief of police or the fire department gets a call, it's a report. I don't know what it is. It could be a heart attack, it could be uh a domestic, it could be a number of things. Uh, Capitol Hill, which is an older, which is an older establishment in town, older village, uh, is consistently there. Uh, Kendall Woods, which I think Baldur's a part, I think Baldur's part of it. We're consistently making calls there. Uh, Charleston Drive, which is down by, I think, the pump station on the south side of town.
Maybe.
Uh, we're consistently there. Uh, Main Street, which one, which is one of our newer ones, next to McGregor Cut. I'm starting to see more activity there. Uh, the Baldwin, which hasn't come online yet, that is a huge project. Yes, I can tell you that we do have a developers' agreement with it in that when they become tax-negative, and correct me if I'm wrong, John.
Yeah, Main Street's under the same agreement.
Then we, then we start to look that they've got to, they've got to stop providing uh people force. Right now, in, in what I call the pipeline, we, uh, that is being considered, we have Vista East and Vista Reg, which is up by Vista. And, and we're looking at, and these are approximate numbers, but I think I'm pretty close, 187 units. And, and they're already talking about that. So I mean, that's, that's a reality right now.
These are, those are townhomes?
Uh, I believe they're townhomes. But what, we're talking 180 plus, plus or minus. Uh, we have the Ultra at Woodmont Commons, which is part of Wood Partners. They have been in. They're looking at over 200 units. 200 units. And, and they're actively pursuing it. And then there's another one, uh, I, I want to say that Verani has uh something to do with it, but I'm not sure. Uh, but that's, that's uh 18 units. So what I'm seeing now, through the budgeting process, through listening to the school, through listening to the fire chief, listening to the police chief, as strange now as it is, and maybe you don't realize it, but what can happen if, in my opinion, if we don't seriously look at it and look for another GMO, that what's going to happen, it's going to be too late. And instead of the fire department making a call and it, uh, for a heart attack at five minutes, now all of a sudden, that, that service is going to get exten- now, all of a sudden, that, that service is going to get extended, I hope not, but could get extended to ten. Because we're shorthanded, we have a lot more that's coming into town. So in my opinion, and I've been here thirty, I think thirty-six years, I think we really need to have an open discussion about providing a new growth management ordinance in this town. We need to start to control it. Because if we don't now, and all of a sudden, five, five years down the line, it's too late. It's too late. So that's my opinion, that's what I would like to see us move forward on, you know, when we have new councils.
So, that, just so you're aware, that has to start at the planning board?
Yep.
And the growth management ordinances are, there's a very tight criteria laid down by the state. So the criteria that's laid down by the state hasn't been the easiest to work with, and there would probably need to be legislation to change how growth management ordinances are done. Yes?
Well...
Are you shaking up and down? Yes?
We would need some legal advice before we proceed on anything like that, given what legislation is in place and...
I under, I understand what you're saying, I don't disagree. I understand what you're saying, I don't disagree.
I'm not saying we shouldn't start.
But I think we have to bring it up, and we need to start it. If we run into roadblocks, so be it, but...
Just setting expectations. I'm all for it.
I just wanted to say Jim's one hundred and ten percent correct, and the other thing to look into with your growth management as a part of it, if you read it, it says that you can include infrastructure. If you don't have enough sewer water, or if traffic is impending certain areas that you can't handle, then you can also put in a growth management, and you can keep, as it sunsets, you can keep clicking it forward and saying, no, we haven't addressed this yet. No, we haven't addressed this yet.
No, I, I think this is great information, it's great ideas, I'm glad you brought it forward. It should be something that we should be working on, and, but we, we need to get some clear direction. And if we need to send a message to the delegation from Londonderry that we need help, we need to find out what that is.
Well, the other thing too is, you said it starts at the planning board? Or I think that we should notify the chairman of the planning board and say, we're, we're requesting this.
Well, we can...
I think we need to tell them.
We can direct the staff to do that.
Okay, that's good.
So, Mr. Chair, it's being the newest member on the council, you mentioned the, the planning board has to initiate the process. What are the follow-on steps beyond that? I, I understand there's legal and...
There's a whole process for developing an ordinance, it goes through the planning board, it goes through multiple public hearings, the planning board vets the new ordinances, once they vetted the new ordinance and have, and have gotten to a point of where they're ready to recommend it to the council, it will come to the council. The council will also go through multiple public hearings, take input, we may send it back to the planning board for a few more discussion. The discussion, we, the council, can also make a decision to change the ordinance and approve it the way we decide to approve it, as long as it's legal. We can't approve an ordinance that's not legal.
Yeah, but I also want...
Which, which happened many years ago, but had to be corrected.
And, which I also want to repeat that we've had two GMOs, one in nineteen ninety-eight and one in two thousand and two, and the two thousand and two under, under law had, they have to sunset at one point, and that sunsetted in two thousand seventeen. So I think it's something that we should bring up, and that taxpayers should, should watch closely.
I agree. No, I think it's great input, great ideas.
No, I agree.
Okay, anything else from the council? All right, so I'm going to shift the agenda around a little bit, and I'm going to give, I'm not going to make Mr. Plummer sit through the entire fire presentation. He's volunteered to come down here, give us some information on 103 West Road. He seems to know some history, and we're all pretty anxious to hear it. So, Mr. Plummer?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Floor's yours. Appreciate it. Counsel, appreciate it. I'd seen some info about a request that was made for a quitclaim deed to be provided for a piece of land down off of West Road, and so I saw that Deb had said, how can we not know who owns that land?
Great question.
Yeah, it is a great question. So I, I gave her a call, and she described to me where exactly it was, and out of that, I did some research. So if you don't mind, I'll start with a little bit of history.
Listen, we'd love to hear it. Love the history of the town.
Sure. So I'm going to go over to Europe, okay? And back in the sixteen hundreds, seventeen hundreds, there was a huge demand for beaver hats, okay? So back in that, in those days, there were still beavers in Europe, and they quickly became basically exterminated through trapping. So the folks over there said, well, we really need to sell these beaver hats, so let's look to North America. So they did that, they, basically, the trapping industry is really what settled a lot of the, you know, Canadian provinces and across North America. It was a big area of income. So what ended up happening, so in New Hampshire, of course, beavers as native animals had extensively dammed up streams and so forth, and so by the end of the seventeen hundreds, or in, in the seventeen hundreds, they were trapped out here. So all those dams were in existence, and over time had broken, broken down, okay? So at the same time this was happening, New England was being settled for farming, and, you know, this was nut field, right? Lots of big nut trees, oaks, hickory, chestnut, et cetera, and which were not very conducive for farmers, okay? So they, the farmers that came here had livestock. They had no real, when they bought their piece of land, they had no fodder, no area to grow hay. So these wet meadows, which by the time they came here, had, these dams had broken down, all these big areas were growing some nice lush hay. Meadow hay wasn't the best quality, but it was the only thing they had. So it actually, at the time, was causing some contention in the area. These were valuable, this was the most valuable land in town. So nowadays, we'd think, oh, it's just a swamp, nobody wants anything to do with it, it's so forth. But as the farms, each of the farms in town were, were deeded to the original settlers, parcels of these meadows were staked off and distributed in order to allow these people to be able to hay and provide fodder for their livestock. The trouble was, is that settlers from Dunstable and Havrell and Drakeet and those areas had been coming up to this area prior to the settlement of Londonderry and taking the hay from these meadows. So there was contention, there was actual, I said, if you look back at the history of Londonderry, there's a book, and it says, "Sometimes an inhabitant of the town, when employed in these meadows, would be seized and carried away by individuals from abroad who laid in wait for the purpose. Thus, a Mr. Christie, while mowing in a meadow, was seized and carried to Havrell without being allowed to apprise his family of his situation. The next day, some of his apparel was found in the meadow where he had been at work, and he was at length discovered and rescued." So basically, they were kidnapping people and taking them away because they, they didn't want them cutting the hay in these meadows. So, I mean, these were valuable properties back then. So that's the sort of stuff that was going on. It wasn't easy to access the marshes, the hay had to be dried, you know, cut, dried, and then brought out of these wet areas, using two men carrying the poles with hay loaded on it, then loaded on a wagon and dragged to wherever it was, was going to be used. So as time went on, the, you know, land in the town was cleared, and this, these parcels became much less important to the farmers in town. The hay was not of the best quality, and you can imagine how difficult and labor-intensive it was to access it. So I learned a little bit about this from my, my great uncle Nathan. You know, he was born in nineteen eleven, and he spoke to me about how he had, as a boy in the nineteen twenties, pulled out hay on what, on the Boyd Meadow, the so-called, they called it the Boyd Meadow, that still belonged to the Plummer family off West Road in Londonderry. So what he told me was that the poor-quality hay was used to feed the dry cows on our dairy farm, as all the good hay was fed to the cows that were producing milk. When I asked him to, he drove me over to Allen Circle on, off of West Road, I'm not sure if you're familiar where that is, and he pointed out the land that the family had owned. He described also that it's a lot, it was a lot different now, because it had all been flooded again by the beavers, so there was really not really good access to it like there was when he was a boy. When I asked him if he still owned it, he told me that he stopped being, he had stopped being taxed on it and assumed it had been taken back by the town. And his description of the land was, it was only good to hold the planet together, that was it. It was just a, not good for anything, basically. So, so I think this is the parcel that had been discussed by the town. I, I know there's no, there's no deed description on that, on that piece, it's not, the parcel is really not identified, but that's where he pointed it out to me, right off that access off of Allen Circle. And so I think the town really should add this to the list of parcels that are used for conservation use. You know, after three hundred years, let the beavers have it again. That's basically my opinion, so, anyway.
That's a great story. Thank you.
Yeah, well, super.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That was awesome. Okay, the other item I have tonight is Order 2023-02, an order relative to the distribution of fire equipment and capital reserve funds. Gentlemen?
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, Londonderry leadership and citizenry, thank you for receiving us tonight. We come before you this evening to request a significant dollar figure out of our capital reserve request for a list of needs, not wants, and I want to be clear on that. This is stuff we need at a minimum to affect our mission, which is to save lives and protect property of the town of Londonderry. Anytime that taxpayer money is expended, we believe it's our responsibility and obligation to explain it, because without the taxpayers, we can't affect our mission, there is no mission. So a couple of housekeeping items tonight, you'll find a bonded copy of the presentation in front of you, but we've also put it up on a slideshow so that the people in the audience and at home can see what the presentation is about, because this is important stuff. This presentation that you see on the slideshow basically mirrors the packet that you have in front of you. The other thing is I have B.C. Halliwell and Lieutenant Lammy with me tonight, and that is for professional growth and development. We believe it's important to grow our subordinate leaders, to eventually work ourselves out of positions, and we can only do that by inserting them into uncomfortable situations so they can get comfortable being there, and I would argue that a town council meeting can at times be uncomfortable. So this is a great opportunity for these gentlemen to develop, but furthermore, they also took a pivotal role in helping us come up with the presentation tonight. So the contents of the presentation, we're going to talk about the mission statement right quick, the capital reserve request amount, we're going to go over some vendor expectations, we're going to identify the fire hose needs, the vendor hose quote to support those needs, something that we've identified and coined as the minimum loadout, or MLO, and what the MLO is, it is the minimum amount of tools and equipment on our fire engines that we need. And then we'll talk about those quotes. So the mission statement, you've seen it plenty of times before, but I'd like to direct your attention to the third paragraph, and it's emphasized, or italicized for emphasis, on the primary goal of the fire department is to protect life and property. In order to do that, firefighters have to be outfitted with tools and equipment. It's arming a soldier with the right combat load. It's giving a soldier ammunition for his rifle in order to do battle. The same is true for firefighters. We can't do anything we do without the proper tools and equipment. Anytime we start a project, we like to identify three areas, and those three areas are the mission, the goal of the project, and the end state, so what the vision is. So for this, again, the mission for this project is to affect our mission statement, we have to be outfitted with the proper tools and equipment, including fire hose. And the fire chief had tasked us with creating the MLO, which I talked about, which is the minimal loadout of equipment and fire hose to be put on those four fire engines that we have. Three front-run fire engines and one fire engine that we have in reserve status. And again, this is all the minimum stuff at baseline that we, we need to have. The goal, the goal was to do an engine company equipment and hose inventory. This was very time-consuming, it took a lot of time, energy, and effort to inventory all of our engines, to find out where they were currently at, and then from that, come up with the minimum loadout. Now, we empowered our company officers, our lieutenants, to have the autonomy through the parameters that we set, the left extreme and the right extreme, or the commander's intent, if you will, to come up with the tools and equipment they feel that they need to do the job. And you might ask, why? Well, because the troops on, in the trenches are always the best people to solve their problems, because they're in it all the time. So we outlined the left and the right parameters, and they worked within it with oversight from the battalion chief and the command staff. We created a list, we also issued, and I'll go into this in the next few slides, the vendor expectations, and we secured quotes, and tonight, the goal is to make that capital request. So what's the end state? The end state, after all, is effective engine companies. We need mission readiness of our four engine companies that are fully outfitted for effective service to the community. What was very important to us while going through this process is that, when we could, we wanted to maintain compliance with the National Fire Protection Association standards, specifically NFPA nineteen sixty-one, which outlines the standard for fire hose. So NFPA doesn't have a standard for tools and equipment that an engine has to carry, and the reason for that is, the majority of fire departments in the nation are volunteer and call, and these communities don't necessarily have the funding to be able to support that. So NFPA doesn't want to tie the hands of a volunteer company. What they do have in issue is a standard for fire hose, the size and the length per foot to be carried on all apparatus. I'd like to note that prior to this and moving forward, the Londonderry Fire Department has always met or exceeded that standard, and that's very important, because hose is truly the lifeblood of what we do. So the capital reserve and the request amount, and again, as I mentioned in the beginning, this is a rather large number, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars from our capital account to reach our end state. And I want to remind and reiterate that this is for needs, this is not for wants or wishes or desires. We need this equipment to affect the mission that the taxpayers have given us. So on this document, or on this slide, you'll see the vendor expectation sheet. Friction can be a funny thing. Human nature is, if you put enough friction in front of it, people check out and they don't follow through, and then take shortcuts. So we thought strategically, instead of tactically, and said, if we put some time, effort, and energy in coming up with crystal-clear expectations for our vendors, then when we spend this money, if authorized by you tonight, that it's accurate, and there's no screw-ups. That's very important when you're talking about taxpayer money. The burden is on us to make sure our vendors get the right dollar figure and follow exactly what we want them to do to spend the taxpayers' dollars. So this vendor expectation was issued to all three of our vendors, and those three vendors are mentioned within the, the PowerPoint itself, and it was very clear, and we outlined three things. We needed a hose quote, and that hose quote was to come off of the document reference later on. The minimum loadout quote, again, reference off the document that you'll see later on, and to ensure the mass state bid, which allows the town of Londonderry not to go out to get three quotes, which is very time-consuming, but we can get one quote, and that will satisfy. So that was very clear expectations for our vendors. This slide will outline the fire hose needs. Again, a ton of time, effort, and energy on our part to inventory all of our hose, to outline what it is we need for engine four, the minimum loadout for our high-rise packs, which I'll get into later, the Sims Drive Fire, you remember back in July of twenty twenty-two where we lost a significant amount, excuse me, amount of hose to contamination, and the total hose order. Now, it's subject to change, but we took that exact form, gave it to our vendors, and said, here, we kept it... said, here, we kept it simple, and that's important, that's very important, because we want to make sure this goes all the way through. So, again, the burden is on us to make sure it's as easy for our vendors, even though they work for us, in order for them to get the job done. So, based off of the hose needs, the next slide outlines the, the quotes from the vendors, and it's pretty significant. To achieve our hose loadout that we need, we're looking at $70,000 worth of fire hose. Our hose, as the chief, as the fire chief mentioned earlier, is aging. When the fire chief took over in 2013, we had a lot of fire hose, and that was good. So, because we had enough fire hose, we could realign and shift our focus and priority on the development that the community was sustaining at the time. So, you're thinking and remembering the expansion on Interstate I-93, the Woodmont, Pettingill, so our need focus, our, our, our need and mission focus from fire hose to technical rescue equipment, trench rescue, confined space rescue, hazmat, heights rescue and below grade. So, we started going down that route, and we outfitted ourselves for that, that was the need at the time. Now, we're in the position where our hose has aged, a lot of it has failed, and we're in a mission-critical part with our hose right now that we can't sustain to lose anymore, we need this fire hose to do the job. The next slide, this outlines the inventory that was completed with Chief Halliwell and Lieutenant Lammy, along with the company officers, the lieutenants, to inventory all of our four engines and determine what we currently had on it. Once that was done, we outlined those things that we needed to be placed on a minimum loadout. So, we took this, this minimum loadout needs, and we sent it again to the vendors to supply these quotes, and this represents all the tools and the equipment that we need on Engines 1, Engines 2, Engine 3, and our reserve engine, Engine 4, and that dollar figure comes to $52,000. So, again, a huge number for us, and it falls on us to prove and support it, and it's pretty significant. The next slide, you will see a quote for regulators on the left, the, the CBA outlines the, or the collective bargaining agreement with Local 3160, the firefighters' union, and the Town of Lunandary states and outlines that each member needs to be issued their own regulator, and all the regulator is, is that, that piece that we clip into our face mask in order to breathe in an, in an IDLH atmosphere, in a smoke-filled environment, in an environment that could kill us. So, we are contractually obligated to outfit that, and that figure came to 31.5. The figure on the right is the high-rise kits. Mr. Chair, you and I have talked about this at length, the, the whole project down at the Baldwins, and the challenges that we're going to have to face for that is pretty significant. There are, these high-rise kits are in order to fight fires on multiple stories. We'll take the stairwell, we'll tap into the standpipe system on the floor below the fire, we'll stretch our hose on the floor below the fire and advance into the fire floor from the stand, from the standpipe in the stairwell. What we did is, we did some pre-planning down at the Baldwin, and we actually took a measuring wheel with us, and we wanted to see, while it's under construction, and I have to say that the developer has been awesome letting us come down there to pre-plan and to figure out the challenges that we're going to be faced with, but we marched it out, how long it would be, a hose stretch from the stairwell to maybe a unit in the middle of that floor, and we found that the hose that we were currently carrying on our fire engines on the high-rise kits wasn't enough, and it certainly wasn't enough to get all the way into a unit in the middle of the hallway from the far-end stairwell in order to have water coverage from the fire hose, that's a problem. We identified that through pre-planning, and because of the amount of training that we've done down there, we've developed a new high-rise kit that will better meet those challenges, and we're very proud of that. But again, that comes down to due diligence for the firefighters, prior to an incident occurring, to go down there under our control in a non-emergency situation to figure these things out, and we've done just that. That price to outfit all four of our engine companies for our high-rise kits that will meet those needs and challenges is $20,000. So, in summary, here is the capital expenditure, a total of $173,293, as I spoke about, and it outlines the minimum loadouts for all of our engines, those regulators that I talked about for the contractual obligations for 3160 in the town, the high-rise packs, the supply hose loadout, and the attack hose loadout. One of the things I'd like to mention while I'm up here is that our fire hose gets tested annually by a third party that comes up, and they test all of our hose to NFPA standard, and through that process, we take that and we inventory that fire hose, and for the first time in a long time at Lunandary Fire, we can accurately say what we have, where it is, and whether it's passed or failed, and that's huge, and that's what our intention is to do, if authorized to withdraw these funds, is to do the same. All that hose will come in, we will test it prior to accepting it. If that hose passed the test, we'll accept the hose inventory, and it becomes part of our system, and then we work on a game plan for replacement and moving it around, maybe some hose that's getting really worn out on Engine 2, which is our busiest engine company, gets rotated out to maybe spare hose or another engine that hasn't been used as much. So, we try to do, we try to stay strategic in that aspect. So, that's it in a nutshell, I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you have, this is very important, and I thank you for your time in letting us explain and support why we need this, because again, it is a need, not a want.
Thank you, that was excellent, Chief.
You're welcome.
I, I just wanted to say, that was a great presentation, and I'm so glad you did that inventory, it's so good to know that information, to pass on to other people as they come into the force. For me, I feel like the people of the town voted money in for you to use for exactly this reason, so there is no reason for us not to, to have you have, use that money for stuff that's necessary. The thing that intrigues me is that you did this, you know, with the Baldwin, how you went up this kind of like recon mission?
Yes, exactly.
Do you do that for all of the new buildings, like, did you do that for McGregor Cart and for Wallace and for all those new projects?
Yes, we did, and that is, that's what's so good about responding to buildings in your community, is that our fire department has that ability to, one, build a relationship with the building representative, to, two, to get to show face so people can see us out there, but most importantly, come up and utilize and take advantage of that opportunity when it's under construction and occupied, to pre-plan, and it's very, we do it for all new construction.
So, now my stupid question. So, do you guys keep somewhere in the, in your computers layouts or diagrams of those buildings? So, if a fire, say, happens at Baldwin, you, you know, the guys are running off and somebody at the command center is able to call up the layout and so know what's the best, I mean, I know you have to analyze it when you get there, in case there's a fire there, but there's got to be, these are the three best ports of entry, this is where we should park, this is what we should do. Do you guys have all of that into your computer system?
I love that question, as much as I want to jump on that, I still want to develop my people, so I'm going to pass this off to Chief Halliwell to answer that, because that's a great question.
So, the answer to your question is twofold, yes, but it's also an opportunity of improvement for us as well. We have a computer-based incident management system that we lovingly refer to as Red Alert, which is the name of it, and within that, it's basically a database of all of our equipment, our tools, our work orders, our dispatch program, and contained within that dispatch program is something that we call pre-plans. Every single one of our pieces of apparatus that responds to emergencies has what we call an MDT or a mobile data terminal in the front of it, and it allows the company officer to pull up information about those buildings. Those floor plans, the egresses, hazardous materials that's held at the site, where the hydrants are, where the NOX boxes are, where the firearm control panel is, all that type of stuff is depicted on plans. The problem that you have is, we have to keep updating those, right? So, once they get put in, they're not finite, they need to be updated as buildings update, right? And so, that's part of the, the struggle of keeping that information current, because we'll go there, we'll pre-plan a building, and then, you know, 60 or 90 days later, it could have changed occupancies, and they've redone the floor plan, it looks a little bit different, but the things that we know that won't change is usually the firearm control panel, where the NOX box is, emergency exits and egresses, hydrant locations, stuff like that. So, from a strategy and tactics standpoint, that information is within our computer database, it's something we're always working on improving and updating, and we also work in conjunction with the Fire Prevention Division, so Fire Marshal Johnson, or, excuse me, Division Chief Johnson, will give us information about when he completes his inspections, if certain things have changed, if they've rewired their firearm control panel and changed it to a different location in the building. So, we, we try to keep that information. We had some residents from a 55 and older community that wanted to give us information as it relates to codes for entry into properties in the event of a medical emergency and stuff like that, so we keep that type of information as well on the hands for the, for the firefighters and the paramedics to be able to use. And about a year or so ago, the fire department made a significant investment into our mobile data terminal program, and we purchased a brand-new Toughbook tablet laptop that goes in the front of every piece of fire apparatus that we, that we own. So, that information is literally at their fingertips, able to be pulled up, it's on the, what we call the first cell network, so they're constantly able to pull that information up. So, yes, the answer to your question is, yes, we do, but personally, I think we could do a little bit better, and it's something we're working on.
So, you have like a process that is in place to make sure that, how it all automatically gets updated, or how, if you have to follow up back with them after so much time?
Yep, yep, we have what's called a pre-plan form, and we'll go out and we'll survey the building, we'll mark it all up, we'll put all the information in, and then we take that document, we scan it in, and we upload it into the program.
Thank you, just back to you, I'm sorry. So, when you put all this equipment in, right, do you keep in the computer information, like, where you bought it from, what it cost, how long it lasted, so that you kind of get an idea?
Yes.
You know, for planning in the future?
Absolutely.
How this works?
We do.
You do, good.
And that's through that Red Alert system, that, and I, I just want to hit the importance of pre-planning, you just talked about, you asked that question. If you close your eyes right now in this room, all of us will know where the exits are, for the most part. We have the ability because we have exposure, we're in here often, we're seeing it. We lose that ability to pre-plan when we go mutual aid to a building fire in a neighboring community, and I will take you back to Sixonita Road on July 27th. We didn't have that ability to pre-plan, therefore, it was a difficult thing for us. That's why, that's why pre-planning is so important.
Is there a software that will allow you to share data? Like, so with the, a, a group that you're, so it's a Derry, right, you do a lot of calls, mutual aid calls to Derry? Is there like a way for the two to communicate with each other so that you would have access? So, if you were going there, they could just send that data over to, to the main?
That's definitely something that we will look into.
Red box thing, and then the red, big person who's running that could send it out to whom?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, and we'll look into that.
They, they would have to have the same, they would have to adopt the same processes we're adopting.
Sometimes there's like a universal device that you can?
It would be great.
Communicate with each other, I mean?
Thank you.
Alright, that was it, good job.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Oh, question, when you have the new hoses certified, you said that when you buy them before you?
Yes.
Put them in the service?
We test them before we accept them.
Do you certify them, or does an independent company come in?
An independent company called Firecat, we contract out with them, and they come in and they test it. So, we're able to shift liability to a third party. Also, we used to do it when I first came on, we used to test our own hose, and we could get away with it back then, because we weren't as busy as we were, but as you can imagine, testing thousands of feet of hose, it strips an engine out of service, and then when a call comes in, you have all this hose laying on the ground, and it's like, what do you do? Well, we're able to eliminate that to a point when we bring in this third party to test our hose, because they do it all for us, we're able to kind of reallocate resources in order to cover that out-of-service engine, and they're so efficient with it that it's, it's very beneficial to the fire department, the members in the town. Now, that doesn't mean that when they're testing, we're not around, no, 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 we're still the ones that have to open those nozzles on those hose. Therefore, one of us, this last time in July when we did it, myself and Lieutenant Lammy were there, and every time a nozzle got placed onto a hose, it went through our hands first, we need skin in the game to say, yep, that nozzle, we know for certain, unequivocally so, that that nozzle was tightened with the bale closed. So, it's very important, we're still there, we still have oversight, but they handle the heavy lifting, the inventorying, and the testing. Thank you. You're welcome.
So, couple rhetorical questions for some of the members in this room. Chief, have you ever told me how to do my professional job of recruiting?
Not that I'm aware, sir.
Chief, have you? Mr. Malaguti, Town Manager, have you?
No.
I, I would agree. Nor have I told you how to do yours, and someone who's been in combat before, like yourself, recognizes the importance of having the proper tools, because at the end of the day, tools, having the right tools, save lives. We're not here to play nickels, we're here to save lives, right? That's what your job is. Save, what is it, save lives and?
Save lives and protect property.
Thank you. So, for me to come up here and say, Chief, that's great and all, but we're telling you how to do your job, and earlier, you said, these are needs, not wants. For me to say, you know, Bo, that's great, thank you, but we need a cut, or, you know, I don't agree with that, I think that would be in those lines of telling you how to do your job that you've done for so long, are professional at doing, clearly, by the way you and your team put together this presentation, the time that you put together with utmost professionalism. So, I completely agree with this withdrawal request from the capital reserve, and I wanted to thank you and your team for doing your jobs and being professional to the highest standards, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you very much for your support.
Is there anything further from the council? So, what I'll say is, is that, you know, I got involved in 99, 2000, I can't remember the exact date, and watched a lot over the years as the fire department has developed and flourished. I think I know most of you since you started, I will say that the last 10 years under Chief O'Brien's leadership, I put us up against anybody, not only in the state of New Hampshire, but anybody, anywhere. We should be damn proud of this fire department, and I'm happy to support you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Accept the motion?
So moved.
To approve Order 2023-02.
So moved.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Lunandary, for your support.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for February 6, 2023, as presented in our packet.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair was affirmative, minutes are approved. We have everybody here tonight to be interviewed for the Utilities Committee. Hi.
Joy.
Are you Joy?
I am Joy.
Hi, Joy, come on up.
How are you? Hello.
I'm sorry, what?
Good day.
Yeah, I think so. Hi, Joy, how are you?
I am well, thank you.
If you're comfortable there, you can sit over there, whatever you're comfortable with.
I'm fine here, yeah, thanks.
Generally, the way we do this is, there's usually some sort of an opening statement if you so desire to make one. If you don't, we can just ask you questions, it's whatever you're comfortable with.
Sure, and I, I just want to state that I look at this as an opportunity to serve my community, and I do think with my background that it would be a good place for, for me to serve.
For our television audience, because we have so many, could you please tell us a little bit about your background?
Absolutely, I am environmental scientist by training, I have, I worked my way up into engineering, but I'm really a true scientist, and I have been, I'm a teacher, right now I'm teaching at the high school level, I've taught at the college level for 10 years prior to, to going into the high school a couple of years ago, and I, so my background is in understanding how our ecosystem functions, how, understanding how wastewater, wastewater engineering functions, understanding a little bit about water and how to purify water. And so, my, my main, I think my main? And so my, my main, I think my main service to this community would be in my passion of bringing forward some options for citizens to have clean water, to have ways to power things that are cleaner and less expensive than, than we have now. And I also, so my family, we moved here. My husband grew up in New Hampshire. We are from New England. But we moved back here to the, to the East Coast after living on the West Coast for about eight years, about eight years ago now. And we've, we've put our money where our mouths are. My husband is also an environmental engineer. And we, as citizens, we have put solar panels on our roofs. We purchased a house that had geo-exchange, geothermal heating system. My husband is currently in the process of swapping out our distribution system. So we now are going to have, well, we do have radiant floor heating. We had two years without it, so, without heating, just a pellet stove. So, so we've, you know, as citizens, as active citizens, we've embarked in a lot of those things that, I'm hoping that my expertise in that and my passion for just bringing forward this kind of, this kind of opportunity for citizens will, will help with the committee.
Well, that was a really nice opening presentation. Thank you.
Well, I know Joy on a couple of levels. She resuscitated Beautify Lunendary by bringing new ideas, new concepts, new visions. And I think she did an amazing job at that by re-energizing the base. She got high school kids involved in, in it and into the solid waste as well. And for that, I applaud her for that. She's also been, you know, a kind of add-on to the green team as well. And so she definitely brings a lot of energy and thought to what she does. So those are my opinions of you. And thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Which is a great choice.
No, I have no comments.
Jim?
Just thank you very much for your willingness to serve our community and dedication to our town. I think it's very important to be mindful of our use of our resources and stuff and hearing that you're doing that. Your domestic level is good to see, and I think that'll be very important to replicate that throughout the community. So thank you.
So I guess I'm left acid. No conflicts of interest?
No conflicts of interest, no.
No. I have to say that was one of the, that was a really nice presentation. One of the better ones I've seen in a while. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
We'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joy.
Okay. Liaison reports. Anything new? Nothing new. Town manager report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of different items that I will address based on some of the questions that were raised in public comment, if that would be helpful to the council and to the community. And then a couple of my own items. Obviously, the first matter that came up and we spent some time on in public comment was the rental of town facilities. That is something that, as you pointed out, is under my authority under the town charter. That's an obligation that I take seriously, the jurisdiction and, over the rental and use of all town facilities. The charter goes further, and it says that the manager is also responsible for the maintenance and repair of all town property under his control within existing appropriations. And then there's the town manager statute as well, which is 37.5, that gives me jurisdiction over town property. So as I said, these are obligations that I take seriously. And as I've repeatedly communicated to members of the public who have inquired, the town hall is not open for public reservation. As you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, the senior center is open for rental reservation. There's actually somebody who's in charge of that there for them. And I would-
One quick thing, before the Lions Hall was condemned, we had an agreement with them that the town manager could also have that facility at his disposal.
That's exactly right.
His or her disposal.
That's exactly, if it wasn't otherwise being used by the Lions, that the town manager could use it for town purposes. Unfortunately, as you know, that space is no longer available. But, you know, perhaps that's something that we could return to in the future. I would point out that this is not a change that I've instituted. This is something that has been town policy under my predecessor and as far as I'm aware, under his predecessor as well. It's not a function solely of concern about what might happen or who, you know, might do something wrong. It's a more general concern for meeting my obligation to ensure that that asset that belongs to the residents, I completely agree with that, is maintained in a clean, secure, and appropriate manner. I would point out that town hall is not configured for open rental to the public. You can get into, if you can gain access to the front door, you have access to the second floor and the first floor. There's no, there's no way to segregate off part of the space right now after hours. And there's no one here, it should be pointed out as well. It was suggested that, you know, in different communities, there's the library, there's the Grange. In different communities, there are community centers. The difference is that those facilities either have someone there to facilitate and be of assistance to people who might be reserving space or renting rooms. And of course, the Grange in Lunendary is not under the control of the town. So that is my reasoning on that. I thought it would be helpful to address that tonight since it was discussed at great length in public comment. There was a concern that was raised about why didn't we publish the town ballot in the Lunendary Times? And I'm prepared to address that because I addressed that last year as well. Last year, the ballot was not printed in the Lunendary Times, if memory serves. And the issue here is an issue that we've been over several times. And it is that Counselor Paul sits on the town council. And the town charter couldn't be clearer that in order to essentially, for a, for a community member, and that includes an elected or an appointed town official, to do business with the town, and that's what that would be, it's not that it can't happen. It's that full disclosure needs to be made to the town council and the town manager prior to the town deliberating on, to the towns deliberating on the matter. So it would need to be brought to the council with full disclosure. And then, of course, Counselor Paul would not be eligible to participate in that determination. I have explained that to Counselor Paul in the past in the context of other advertisements. And that's what I would tell anyone who inquired if they had contacted me. There were discussions this year, as there were last year, with the Lunendary Times. And what the Lunendary Times indicated was, let me back up. Our arrangement with the Lunendary Times is that they will run legal notices for the town at no charge. And that was a generous offer that Counselor Paul made probably a little more than a year ago. But it's an offer that takes the disclosure and decision-making by the town council of the self-interested transaction off the table. I, I believe that the Lunendary Times takes the position that the ballot is not a legal notice. I think that's probably correct, and therefore, under our arrangement, they would not have an obligation to run it in the newspaper. But that's why, as a factual matter, it was run in the Dairy News. Bouncing around a little bit, Mr. Chairman, there was a question that was raised about Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. And that was connected to the recent reorganization and the elimination of the associate planner position. And I can tell you that the two have nothing to do with each other. The, our discussions with Southern New Hampshire Planning address a vacancy that currently exists, that is, the town planner vacancy, that, as I said, the elimination of the associate planner position does not affect. Whether that position had been eliminated or not, once the planner position went through one round of postings and we were not able to fill it successfully, we determined that we needed the assistance of a consultant to ensure that our planning needs continue to be met. And that's why we have an arrangement with Southern New Hampshire Planning to meet those needs. Mr. Chairman, a couple of other things. The town reports will be available in the town manager's office beginning on Thursday. People who are interested in obtaining a copy of that can contact Kirby Brown or swing by. And then, lastly, Mr. Chairman, I got a letter today from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation talking about the bridge at Stokes Road over Little Cohas Bridge, Little Cohas Brook. That's a bridge that's in poor condition. We've known that it's in poor condition. And New Hampshire DOT is offering to contribute significantly to replacing that bridge. The cost right now is estimated at $876,000. And the requirement to obtain this money would be a 20% share of town grant funding. I don't need an answer from the town council right now, and the council's consensus is not legally binding. But they are asking to know whether we are interested in continuing discussions with them to either replace or eliminate that bridge altogether, understanding that there would be a 20% town share that could be covered through other means, through other grant funding or through the roadway maintenance trust fund.
So all they want to know is that we want to continue talking?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm getting nods up and down, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mike, can you acclimate me to where Stokes Bridge is?
I believe that is right near the Triangle Mobile, up in the north section of town.
Just so-
It's that little-
Yeah.
Yeah, just so people know, I don't think the fire department will allow their equipment to drive over that.
Yeah, they gotta go in the other way.
They gotta go in the-
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, other than we've, we've obviously had a conversation about growth management ordinance, so I think you got the message that we want to like start seeing what's required. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, two things. On Wednesday, the planning board will have a joint meeting with the Heritage Commission. And the focus of that discussion will be the Lookbook, which I think we can all agree is in need of serious updating. So that will be hopefully a productive discussion. And second is Woodmont Common has submitted and finalized their annual fiscal update, which they're required to do per the development agreement. And that will be before the planning board, April 12th.
April 12th. Can you make sure that all of us get a reminder on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Seeing nothing else? Are we all set? Yes. Yes.
Couple of things. I want to talk about Deb. Deb, you and I have had disagreements. In your early tenure, you had come out and had, I want to say accused the councils of, in the town of corruption. What I would like to know is, did you find any? That's number one. Because I need to close that. And because that's where you and I really potted waste. Maybe you never knew that, but that's where you and I potted waste. One thing that I can say is when Deb had a good idea, I stuck with it. And Deb, I want to thank you, even though we've had disagreements, I want to thank you for stepping up and becoming a counselor. It hasn't, it's not an easy job, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim. And I don't remember saying corruption. I just said we all had conflicts of interest at some point.
Okay.
And we all do. I mean-
We agree to disagree.
Because it's a big but small town. There's only so many people that step up. And it tends to be all the same people.
Okay.
And, you know, you can interpret that any way you wish, but-
Okay. I still thank you for your service, Deb.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you're, you're a big enough man to do that, and thank you very, very much.
You're more than welcome.
And, Mr. Chair?
I would also like to thank you for your service, Counselor Paul. I know it's never easy, and the time that you have given to this community is much appreciated, and thank you.
And I'll echo those sentiments. You know, it's been, it's been a pleasure. I think we've all, I've learned things that I didn't know, and I thank you as well for your service.
Thank you very much. It was a challenge. I wish that my first year and a half, we didn't have COVID, so I could have actually accomplished more. But I feel that I got some things pushed through in a year and a half. If I had had the full three years, I think, I would have done more.
I think you've done a lot.
No, not enough. Always more.
That's Deb.
So with that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, the polls are open at 6:00 a.m. on March 14th. They close at 8:00 p.m. So please vote. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there's four methods they use for determining the taxation of, you know, commercial-